Good evening, everyone. My name is Tim Martin. I'm Chair of the ZBA for Town of Norfolk. Welcome to the zoning Board of Appeals Wednesday, January 18th, 2023 meeting. In accordance with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, provisions of Matthew's General Law, Chapter 30, Section 20, notice is hereby given that the zoning board of appeals shall be physically close to the public and will meet via Zoom online video conferencing tonight, January 18th, 2023, at 7:00 PM. The hour being 7:05, I call the meeting to order. Our first appointment tonight is with Peter Diamond. Peter is the Town of Norfolk Electrical Inspector, a Town of Norfolk resident. And he recently installed solar panels, ground-mounted solar panels, in his residence. And the reason we invited him here this evening was, as many of you know, solar panels that are roof-mounted are allowed as a matter of right. Those that are ground-mounted require a special permit. So I could foresee or anticipate a lot of these applications coming in. And we'd certainly invite them. But I want to hear from somebody like Peter, who has installed one, has experience with it now, and could talk to us and answer our questions about how we may want to look at these from a zoning standpoint. But also, how are they, how is the efficiency of them? How is it working for him? What's his takeaway now that he's installed it? So just a great overview would be helpful to the board and town, I thought. So I welcome Peter. Thank you for volunteering your time and hopefully you can give us an overview of your solar panels and how they've worked out for you and your thoughts.
Hi, Tim. Can you hear me?
You're fine, thank you.
Hi, I'm Peter Diamond. Hi Courtney. Hi, Tim, Joe, David, and Rich. So I don't see Josephine here tonight. I see we have a guest, Andy Beckenowski, who is very knowledgeable about solar also. And like you said, I put in a ground mount, a small-scale ground-mounted solar system on my property. It's 12,000 watts DC. And I put out 9,800 watts AC, which feeds back into the grid. Whatever I don't use of that power, it feeds back into the grid. My, my ground mount array takes up approximately 50 feet in length. And it's about 15 feet deep. And at the highest point, it's about eight feet tall in the rear and about three feet in the front, at about a 30-degree tilt facing south. I couldn't be happier with the performance of the system. I've had it turned on through EverSource Electric now for six months. And for the last six months, I don't owe anything on my electric bill. Zero. I owe nothing. I actually have a credit right now of $600. So my usage was based on about 8,000 to 9,000 kilowatt-hours a year. If you look at your bill, you can add up what you use in a year. And I built the system at 12,000 kilowatts, which is a bit bigger than I use. And I have extra energy that I can do a number of things with. I could, I could share it with someone in the area that's on the same network in EverSource. For example, my father lives on the other side of town. I could share some of my extra credits with him or another family member or even one of you here that are in town if I so wanted to. Joe, Joe wants some?
Looks like he does.
So I briefly watched the meeting you had recently and you all had a bunch of questions. Is there any specific question you'd like to?
Sure, I would.
Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, as far as the initial, you said you installed. Or what's the initial upfront investment in terms of, not the amount of money, but what is it that that takes to get the system into your property?
Well, of course, I have a ground mount. So the first thing I had to do was go through the special permit process, which that can take six months, three months to six months, depending on how fast I get the paperwork for you and how fast you, it goes through the process and then have it all approved and down to the Registry of Deeds to get that stamped and bring that back. And then supplies shortages. I really wanted to put this in in 2021, but we didn't get through permitting. And the winter came. It was a cold winter last year, so I put it in this year. And one of the positive things about putting it in this year is the federal government increased the investment tax credit back to 30%. I don't know if everybody understands what the investment tax credit is. Basically, if a system costs $30,000 to put in, just the number, 30% of that you can write off the cost of that investment to put a solar system in. Dollar for dollar, your tax burden.
Right. And again, by putting it in though, who put it in?
Well, I hired a professional installer to put it in. And I'm a licensed electrician, so I did all the electrical work from my house's electrical system to the array in the yard.
Right. Yeah, I don't want to infringe on what, you know, we shouldn't discuss openly. But I guess homeowners or people like me would want to know, what is the investment to get one of these installed that's something that works for you and your property?
Are you asking for a number of what it costs?
I'm trying. I don't know. I don't see appropriate.
It could cost anywhere from $20,000 to $60,000 to do something, depending on how large. If you start adding batteries, the batteries could significantly add to the cost. I do not have a battery on my system. I did not want to put out the extra money to put a battery in.
Peter, could you talk about the battery a little bit? Because I know of still Courtney's question, but you know.
Just, Joe, did I finish with your?
No, you do. The question is, I'm going to ask eventually when I can, the difference between this and when other companies are helping people install them, let's say on their roofs? Because the difference is that if people are getting assistance to get these type of systems versus you made a self-investment in this, right?
Yeah, I own my system.
Correct. Okay.
They have a different program for people who want to have it on, you know, have solar. But then they get all the credits for it, the company that sells it to them.
Correct.
And then they'll sell the electricity back to you at a reduced rate. And I'm not really versed on all the different programs that are available with regard to not owning it outright. I wanted to own it outright. So I realized all the credits and all the benefits of the power offset my electric bill, which, as we all know right now, the power companies are raising electric rates to astronomical levels.
Right. Yeah, and that does answer my question. But I know we're talking about two different things in terms of fully self-invested versus other opportunities to have some investment, you know, come to you from other sources. But again, there's different issues that come along with all of that, I understand.
Sure.
But let me take you away from the battery question. That was a good one, too.
Sure. Courtney, you had some questions about the battery?
My questions about the batteries are more just like good practices for us as a town as to whether or not we should be keeping track of where they are and what the fire risk is with them.
Well, there's no, right now, I'm not aware of any fires that have started from batteries. Along with the batteries that we're putting in the house here with the solar systems, there are a number of people buying automobiles that are all electric. And they're parked in the garage, too. And the batteries in those cars are much larger than the batteries that were putting in the house. So for example, a Tesla battery has a storage capacity of 13.5 kilowatt-hours. And a lot of the electric cars will have 60 kilowatt-hours to 120 kilowatt-hours in their battery. There's different battery chemistries. There's nickel, manganese, cobalt, which is called NMC. And there's also LFP, which is lithium phosphate. Those two chemistries are different. One is a little more volatile than the other. The NMC is a little more volatile than the LFP. There's different manufacturers that make the batteries. If I were to put one in my house, I'd probably select the LFP. There are different codes. We can't put a battery in our living room. They have to be in the garage or in the basement in the utility room. There are certain codes that are being developed right now as these systems are rolling out. So, and I think you were asking about your concern about the battery at the end of life. There's battery recycling, there's solar panel recycling, there's solar panel repurposing, there's battery repurposing. We have, some of these panels I've read, the solar panels get sent to third-world countries to be repurposed out there for people who don't have power at all. Some of the car batteries are, there's talks of repurposing car batteries to be used in houses for backup storage. Battery recycling, there's actually a company that was formed in Massachusetts. It's called Ascent Elements. It's in Westboro, Massachusetts. And right now, it's the largest recycler of batteries in the United States. And they're just opening a new 150,000-square-foot facility in Coventing, Georgia, where they'll recycle batteries and take all their important elements and metals out of the batteries and repurpose them and reuse them, recycle them. Same with, same with solar modules. They're all recycled. The last thing you want to do is take a lithium battery and throw it in the trash.
Yeah.
It's just not allowed. EPA has rules about it. It would be a fire hazard to throw it in. It needs to be recycled. Are there you shared concern on end-of-life of the systems? Whether you should come up with some conditions on a small scale? I don't think you need to come up with any conditions on a small scale. We are doing that on the large systems. The end of life, take, those need to be taken apart and disposed of accordingly.
Peter, I just had one question. I think what, towards the issue of, you know, protection of the batteries and the possibilities of fires, when they, when they're charging, do they emit any gases?
No, they don't.
Okay, that's the good thing. I think that's what people are asking. Because the old lead-acid batteries were a real problem if you put them inside.
Yeah, if you were overcharging the old lead-acid batteries, there'd be a problem with gassing off.
So that's what these new batteries really bring to the, bring to the front?
Yeah, these new batteries are sealed and they have charge controllers that will sense an overcharge and shut down if they're working properly.
Yeah.
Peter, it's Tim. When you design the system for your particular property, how do you consider the height of the system? Is that dictated by, you know, vegetation, sun rotation, things like that? How should we monitor that?
Well, I personally wanted to keep the height of my system as low as I could for aesthetics for the neighborhood. I didn't want to put something up too tall. But you want to maintain your solar access. In other words, you want to maintain your position to the sun. We instituted a 50-foot setback because that's the zoning rule. I probably would have had better solar access if I moved it 15 feet more towards the street. Because I'd seem to get more sun there. And that's where it's kind of a gray area that solar access in Chapter 40A, Section 3 says that municipalities should prohibit or unreasonably regulate the solar energy system. I don't think there's any case law on it yet. But if someone really wants solar access, you know, moving, taking trees down, moving it to a different position should be within their right, according to the law.
That was kind of my point, because we really don't have a lot that we can regulate on this. Not that we, we don't want to over-regulate. We want to encourage it. But like you alluded to, aesthetics for yourself, for your neighbor. You know, you were cognizant of that and you designed a nice, nice system. As we go forward, I'm sure we'll see some others that people can agree or disagree. But we're not going to acquire fencing around it and vegetation because that would defeat the purpose of it, where they just go higher. So I'm just looking for any guidance on that. I think you've addressed it, that you like it to be a certain height so that you could manage it. But also, you know, respect the aesthetic of it for yourself, for your neighbors. Maybe that's something the board can look at when we get these applications is consider the height of it, why it's that height. Kind of be a little lower if need be, but still, you know, useful, economical.
Well, exactly. Like I said, three feet in the front, Tim. That's in consideration of the snowfall we can get around here. I don't want it to be buried under the snow. So I wanted it to have three feet in the front. And I didn't really want it to be too tall in the back. I planted some trees. I put some fencing. I'm trying to dress it up a little bit. I still have more to do, but I think it looks pretty good. I saw the comment during your last meeting that the one on Park Street appeared to be further back than mine. Well, they're actually both very close to the setback of 50 feet. So, and I know he took some trees down over there so we could have solar access. There was, if you look back on that decision, part of that whole plan was to take down some trees that were right at the road so we could have solar access, sunshine. On the fencing, one of the first systems that came into town was over there on Union Street. They have a large system in their backyard. And we did ask for a fence around that one. I agree that you should leave the fence decision up to the building department. The building commissioner is very cognizant of the safety for the neighbors. If he, if we feel that there could be a possibility of someone being hurt, we would require a fence around it.
If you feel it could be an attractive nuisance, you require some sort of fencing.
A danger, a hazard to the public.
Right. Yeah, because Peter, the electricity coming off the panels themselves is DC. So it is, you have to be pretty careful with it until you get it inverted to the AC, right?
Well, there's different systems. The microinverted system goes AC right at the panel.
Okay, good.
So, you know, the voltage there is typical to what you see around your house.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then, you know, on the side of your house, you have a 240-volt meter with a service without any fusing, that, all that. It's pretty dangerous, too. We don't put a fence around that.
No, that's true. That's true. I had one other question. You started talking about. I've heard some people saying that EverSource, when you, like you, have got a system that's bigger than your local demand for your house, that how do you get repaid if you give them, you're getting a credit? How do you use that?
Well, I have a credit and eventually I will give that credit to my father or someone else in the family. Or maybe convert some of my systems from oil to electric. Or maybe I'll buy an electric car. And then I have that room in my system built to charge my electric car.
Okay, got it. That's good. Yeah.
Yeah. So I wanted to build bigger than I needed. They, they won't, EverSource won't send me a check for that $600. It's so in savings, I might say. I am part of the SMART program, which is an incentive program that pays me for the production. So far, I've received just under $300 in checks from EverSource for the money, for the, for the solar energy I've produced.
Okay.
Peter, why did you decide to go ground-mounted as opposed to roof-mounted?
I have, my buildings, my home is a hip roof with dormers, on all four dormers. So I, and my, my house is closer to the tree line. So I actually put my solar ground-mount system where my garden used to be. So I don't go.
It was no decision. It was easy to make.
Yeah, there's, I no longer grow vegetables. I'm growing electricity.
Very good. Any other questions to Peter?
One other question, I think, Joe, would be, Peter, since you did the investment, you funded the project yourself. How long do you think your payback's going to be?
I haven't seen my accountant. I haven't sat down with him yet. But I expect my payback to be five to eight years.
Okay, good.
And that was one decision that if you're going to do this on your house, you probably should be planning on to stay there for 10 years. And there, you know, there is something in the tax law that the tax man can't tax your property for the value of the solar system. I don't know if you were aware of that. That one's on the books, too.
Well, on a side note, it'll be interesting to see how the resale values improve or hurt or have no impact when folks, you know, do this.
If I was going to buy a house and the price of electricity right now, I'd probably favor buying a house with solar, in my personal opinion.
But only the trend.
Right now, in the building department, we're getting a large increase in applications. And for all those watching out there, just do your homework. Get three estimates, get references from other people who have used the company. Because there are a lot of companies there. You know, there was a story of a company that the people in Yarmouth had a problem with. Solar Wolf, I think, was the name of the company. But that was actually in the news. Apparently that they took deposits and then they had some business trouble and they went out of business. So just do your homework out there. If you're going to invest in solar, make sure, just as if you were going to remodel your kitchen or your bathroom, that you get references. And make sure they all pull permits, make sure permits are in place before they do any work on your property. I don't know of anything else I can add. I see Andy Beckenowski in the background being real quiet, but.
Is there anybody?
Andy's very knowledgeable about solar.
Is there anybody else in the public who has a question or a comment?
Andy's going to talk about third-party and then he's going to plug. He, I know he told me he's going to put together, oh, no, with the Energy Committee, to do a workshop for residents on solar, right, Andy?
That's right, Rich. And that's probably why Donna has her hand up, because she was going to ask about that. So I can echo, I can say, at least 99% of some of the stuff that Peter has done. The other 1% is just stuff that the technology has changed so much and even the past two years that, you know, he's a little bit ahead of the curve on some of that stuff. So I've had solar in my house 17-plus years now. I'm well into the black. I installed it myself when the regulations allowed me to do it. So I did the design and everything else like that. But when it comes to the third-party ownership that Joe had asked about, you need to be really careful. What they're, some of the, I'll call it, some of the sales pitches that they're doing is they're providing zero interest or zero, zero money down. But what they're doing is they're extending the lease period from 20 to 25 years. An example, a friend of the family in Medfield had a system that they wanted to put in. The total lease payments over 25 years was $81,000 or $31,000 worth of equipment. So it's, it's a little bit of an eye-opener. As Peter had said, that the cost of the system should not affect your tax rate. And you have basically a 20-year exemption, having sat on the Board of Assessors. But also made sure that that was one of the things that actually benefits me as well as anybody else has come in when I was on the Board of Assessors, where they, you know, they wanted to confirm that they were getting the exemption. It's only for 20 years because by that time, the life expectancy of the equipment is basically zero. So if the system keeps running after 20 years, you know, it's, it basically has no value. Even though it does have a value, it's, you know, based on the paper and the regulations, there's no value. So, but going back to third-party ownership, when you sign that third-party ownership, the people that own the equipment do not own the property and therefore they, they have to pay taxes on it. So that is rolled into your, your lease arrangement. So you're paying, you're paying taxes on it. So obviously, that's not, that's not a great deal for anyone. The other things that they're putting in is extended warranties that they hide in some of the facts and figures of, you know, of basically panel maintenance. I can, I've been doing this probably 20 years now and have been, and again, I'm not an electrician, so you know, I just understand the technology. But what I do is a lot of the site work as well as documenting the construction of it and also sort of have a, have an understanding of how electricity works. And Peter, I think, I think I fall into the category of being a dangerous homeowner when it comes to that. So I'll, I'll leave it at that. But that being said, some, the hidden costs in some of these, these systems are crazy. Typically, the third-party companies will use older technology. Is it ancient technology? No, it's like three or four years old. But they got a great deal when they bought hundreds of pallets of them and they tried to put that on there. This particular case in Medfield, they wanted to put 340-watt panels on the roof. And the current technology is probably close to 4, 425, 450 watts per panel. And what that means is by reducing the panels, you can put less holes in your roof. So that's something to think about, too. And then another thing that you have to look at is how old is your roof? Five years is probably about the maximum you want to think about. You know, if your roof is five years old, that's about when you should, could safely put a PV system on the roof. Once you start getting over that, they just start getting more brittle and you're subject to leaking. So that's something you want to look at, too. And yeah, it's, it's, there's a lot of things to look at. We'll cover all this in the workshop that we're going to put together with the Energy Committee. I just got to finish up confirming with some of the other folks on the Energy Committee about their availability. I have a gentleman from DOER that's interested that will talk as well about state incentives. Right now, the only real incentives are, as Peter mentioned, the SMART program. That's the only state incentive that's out there. There are no, other than the tax benefits at federal and the state level. The state level is only $1,000, which I think, that's what you got, Peter?
$1,000.
Yeah, it's $1,000 and that's it. And even if Peter wanted to add on to his system in coming years or change the panels out to a higher, higher output, if the technology and the prices come down, he can't, he can't take advantage of the state tax credit after that. So that's a one-time thing, but the feds, the feds, you can. So, so that's some of the things. And I apologize, I kind of balanced around here a lot. But this is, this is, this is complicated. This is not rocket science, but this is pretty complicated stuff. And a lot of people get overwhelmed by what's there. And the high pressure and people worried about the price of electricity and what they're paying right now. I mean, people will do, you know, they'll basically make jump and rash decisions very quickly. And, you know, I always encourage to, you know, do your homework. Peter said, get three bids, get five bids if you want to. And if somebody says, you know, they're not, they're, you know, they really need a decision tomorrow, trust me, they don't need a decision tomorrow because the lead time on some of this equipment is six to eight months. And to give you an idea, the, the cost of panels hit a low in December. in December of 2021. And right now, the price of panels that I can physically get, not as a contractor, but as a homeowner um, are about 40% higher than they were in 2020.
Wow.
So, you know, that's the, but they're still, they're still cheaper than when I put them on my house in terms of price per watt. But yeah, so this is, you know, this is, it's the the markets, it's going crazy. It's it's in a lot of fluctuations. Um, you know, I, I'm I'm a firm believer of uh, you know, some of the aesthetics of these systems. I don't think that the, you know, that a roof mounted system um, is a bad thing as long as your designer is good. I mean, if you've driven around town, you'll see a couple couple of systems at the panels or landscape and then they turn portrait on the end. Um, it's just not a clean installation. And that's, you know, one thing you have to realize too is if it's a, if it's a solid surface with no changes, no regularities, um, the snow will shut off them a lot quicker. Whereas if you have a change, um, the snow will get hung up. It's it's just, that's just the way it is. So and I can also speak from from the case of New Hampshire. New Hampshire actually requires that you put the panels um, within two feet of the edge. So the snow will shed off the roof. Obviously they get more snow up there, but that's something that um, I never fully understood until we we have a small cabin up north and we put panels up there too. And uh, yeah, it sheds right off and you know, you're generating power on the nice cold sunny days. So.
So so my panels are 400 watts. Um, just for the size of it, I have 30 of them at 400 watts. So that's 12,000. Uh, 10 years ago, a high performance solar panel was two to 220 watts. So 10 years later, we're putting 400s in. I've already had one homeowner in town remove their 10 year old system with 200 watts and put 400 watts in. They were originally in what was called the S RAC one program in Massachusetts, which paid bigger incentives. Solar renewable energy credits. They had S RAC one, S RAC two, and now we're in the smart program. The fact that they put a new system in, they're not my understanding is they're gonna get smart credits again for the next 10 years. As they put a new system in, plus they'll get the 30% federal tax credit. As long as they have a tax burden, they can get a tax credit dollar for dollar on their tax burden.
Hmm.
I know the town in Norfolk that actually owns a lot of uh, so a few solar systems around town. One we're probably all see when at the transfer station. That's a one point 1.2 or 1.5 megawatt system that's uh, nearing the end of its um agreement with the town in Norfolk in the next few years and and I'm of I'm of the opinion that the town should try to buy that system and that and that and upgrade that system. So the town owes it owns it and then they can, we can offset the town's electrical burden with ever source with our very own solar system.
Right, right.
Uh, I think Rich is familiar with that. So.
I don't, Matt, Matt has run the numbers.
We have one on the Freeman School too.
Hmm.
But um, maybe we only own two. Is that right, Andy?
Yeah, they, I'll be honest with you, the Freeman, um, the inverter has has reached its end of life and I know Matt is looking at getting it rebuilt. Um, I I can't go into too many details, but I think I may have found a source of a temporary replacement of the, they call it the core. It's that big silver box inside the inside the cabinet. If you looked inside, um, I think I may have a source of a of one that he could, we can just swap out. So we're we're desperately trying to work that out, those details out. But when it comes to the landfill, we have four years left on the lease with Constellation. Um. The the details with that one are that the choices are the town can request them to remove it and then restore the area to its original state, uh, which, you know, may or may not be to the practical or feasibly feasible financial wise, especially where they took all the trees down. Or we take it and then you, there are contractors out there that want to recover and basically recycle and take old equipment. Um, we get a value from them that goes towards the purchase of new new equipment. And I think the numbers that Matt said that we could easily be getting two and a half times out of what we're getting out of that system now by re re paneling it, rewiring it and putting new inverters in. So it's a, it's a, it's a, that's a big chunk of change. It's a big chunk, it's a big chunk of change. So, and the same as the town.
Peter and Andy, uh, this is Chris Metcalf.
Yeah.
People have heard this before, you know, we have a number of parking lots around Norfolk. Has there been any consideration about trying to work with some of those parking lot owners to utilize those spaces?
Uh, I have no. Well, we we talked about it at the new police station to try to do some carports up there, but it hasn't really come to fruition.
Well, the the biggest one I, you know, I have in mind would be the MBTA parking lot, which is virtually tree free in most of that area.
Yeah, we we wouldn't have any control over the development there. That's that's up to the MBTA.
Okay.
I I believe they did do some of their stops with solar.
Yeah, I don't think, yeah, they haven't done it here yet. Right.
Right.
Okay.
I, Chris, I can, I can, I'll put Rich on the spot a little bit. We had a very second discussion last week about solar canopies and looking at changing zoning for for by rights. Um, one, one of, one of the things about a solar canopy is the cost to install them as well as the financial undertaking to put them in would basically prohibit a homeowner from doing it. So that's, so that that's, that's, I'm not saying that's working the system, but that's that's a limitation where um.
You know, uh, Andy, one of the things I see in the future is more and more electric cars.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
So you, the integration of the solar cells in the parking lot, keep the cars cooler and you you've got the ability to charge.
Yep, yep.
And it seems a good match. And I I don't know, I I don't have any contacts with the MBTA to start those discussions, unfortunately.
Um, hav- having worked for the DOC for 20 plus years, um, there's, there's people at the MBTA that I know through some of the committees I've sat on and um, we've chatted, I've I've overseen one, one megawatt solar canopy at Roxburg Community College. That was a job a couple of years ago. And I'm, I I continue to chuckle because uh, people were getting in early during the week, especially on on days of rain and snow, so they could park the car under the canopy. There was one, there was one line that was that was always left out and, you know, you have those people driving around and trying, you know, they they go, they come in, they go two different directions and they're racing around to get to that last spot that's under the canopy. So they wouldn't have to deal with snow or rain. So, um. But you know, it's, you look at the city of Newton, um, the library, the schools, um, a lot of the town parking lots all have solar canopies. And this is all, this is all in the past three to five years. Um, Thudbury is doing it at their school as well. But yeah, we have, we have a lot of space that we can, that we can put these up. I'm a big fan of them because it, one, it doesn't um, it doesn't necessarily detract uh, from usable space um, that can be replaced by something else. I mean, you you have to work and you have to have a good engineer that can work within uh, the confines of the parking areas. And from firsthand experience, the biggest issue with solar canopies up here is plowing. Because, you know, you get wind blown, snow in there and um, Roxburg Community College is a good example where the plows, you know, they hit, they hit the the foundations that were sticking out of the ground. So you had to put bowards in. So could they have, they could have spanned, they could have spanned the entire parking lot. But again, you know, it was, it was cost that drove that.
One of the things that the other reason I'm bringing it up is that Rich is on the, Rich is on this session and uh, we're in the process of rewriting our, you know, our planning for the future for Norfolk. And somewhere or other, the these discussions about solar and integrating into open spaces that don't, that that provide more than just, as you say, they provide shelter for vehicles, they provide shade, um, and they provide the power to charge them, you know. Somehow we need to integrate that into our planning going forward.
And from from the resiliency side, and this is, this is, there's, there's a, there's study being done right now, um, at the, if you've been out in Cambridge, the Alway Brook Parkway area and the MBTA reconfiguration and all that, with all the solar canopies that are going up uh, now, and they're finding that there's a benefit. Um, one of the big problems they encountered was some of the buildings that were put in over the past decade, uh, they're realizing this, these reflective coatings on the buildings are causing, are causing literally structural damage to the roadway into the, into the sidewalks. They're buckling and they're crumbling and they're falling apart. So, you know, this concept of heat sink and resiliency and, you know, creating these conditions where uh, if you can do something different to shade those areas, that's what they want to do. So now, um, you know, the the funny, interesting is a solution in that in Cambridge is they should plant more trees. It's like, well, they took all the trees down so they can, they could have these open spaces and these wide sidewalks. So they're gonna go plant trees again. Um, but they're also looking at, you know, basically shade structures that have solar on top of them. So, you know, which, you know, which can you manage better? You know, obviously trees can have to be trimmed, have to be pruned, have to be maintained. The systems have to be maintained too, but I think the solar canopy is a lot more manageable in that case. And the same thing in the center of Norfolk. I mean, the, you know, the downtown area, you know, with all the paving that's gone on, um, in the parking lot. I mean, these are, these are areas that are, you know, that do create these heat sinks and these are in 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 any area. You know, I'm quite sure if you've, if you walked up the MBTA parking lot during the summertime, you know, it's, it's hot. It's hot. So. Yep. But Rich and I did talk about, you know, the solar canopy uh, by rights and limiting the size and it's more detailed to be worked out. But I think I think this is, this could hopefully streamline some of the, some of that going through. I know there'll be objections because people don't like the way they look, but times are changing and, you know, I I I'll get in my soapbox for a second, but you just have to realize that this is, if you want cheap power and you don't want to pay the price, you you gotta find some other way to do it or turn all your lights off.
And we don't like that.
Yep, yep.
So to be fair, Donna's had her hand up for a while and through the chair. Yeah, I recognize Donna Jones.
Go ahead, Donna.
Thank you, Peter. Um, question and a statement. Um, do you ever clean them off?
No.
Well, snow of pollen, of bird or tree droppings?
The rain will do that. Um, this fall, there were quite a few leaves that were building up on it. I just use my leaf blower to blow them off. The rain cleans them. I don't, I don't, I haven't done anything. Uh, over time, I might wanna look at some way to clean them, but right now I have no problem. Uh, they produce more in the sunny months. Right now I call the dark months. They're still producing power. They're producing more than I'm using right now in the dark months. So I'm very happy with my system.
The other thing I'd like to mention was Mass Audubon Stony Brook, a nature center. Um, they had they, the organization had a mission to put in charging stations at their sanctuaries and their uh, engineer analyst, I'm not sure what her title was, looked at our bylaws and saw nothing that meant that she needed to report to the town first. So they started to install them and town hall said, well, wait a minute, you're putting a charging station in a residential zone and you need to tell us first. So something in there needs to be clearer as to when a s- s- charging station or a panel needs to be run by the town. Uh, Mass Audubon does not have any panels. It is
charging station.
Something that looks like a gas pump, but it isn't.
Well, they do have solar systems on the building, but um, I I know what the charging station you're talking about and apparently there was some zoning issue with that and I believe they worked through it and it's there now.
Right. It it was, it was an awkward case that the person said, I read your laws and I didn't see why I needed to report and then building committee says, whoa, wait a minute, you you did it wrong. And they were like, they couldn't tell us why. And then they went before the board and planning board and well, why are you here? And the applicant was kind of like, I don't know. You told me to. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Donna. Is there anybody else in the public that has a question or a comment? I can't see if there are any hands up.
There aren't any hands up.
I I I had a question. Hi, everyone. Sorry about the hard time getting in. Hi, um, we are seeing, you know, the um, rates going up and I guess we could be one of the last holdouts of never, you know, of not going solar because we've seen a lot of our friends go solar. I'm just gonna, I'm just kind of concerned about roofs that are like seven years old or nine years old or 10 or 13 years old. Are there any options out there for them or are there any um, solar companies that are offering new roofs? I think I saw a couple of advertisements. I don't know what people do in these situations.
Well, I'll comment on that. At the building department right now, we're making we're we're not making, we're asking the homeowner to sign a release that they understand that the roof, the age of the roof. If, so if you put a solar system on a roof that should last 20 or 30 years and it's 10 years old, you're probably gonna have to take it off your roof to fix your roof, which could be an unnecessary, not unnecessary expense that you don't wanna have to go through. So we're trying to make you, as a homeowner, looking at putting these systems in to make sure you understand that you you might wanna put a new roof in before you put a solar system on.
Also, I have another question. Um, you've been very helpful, um, Mr. Diamond. Uh, are the, are these solar panels getting smaller? Do you foresee them getting smaller before people buy into these and by the time they get done 20, 30 years paying for them, they're obsolete?
Well, um, 10 years ago, the solar panels were 200 watts. Now they're 400 watts. So you're right. Um, I don't think I'll be tearing my system apart in 10 years. If it keeps producing the way it is, I I'd be happy with it for 15 to 20 years. But I, I, we do, we do hope that the price will come down. And there's emerging technologies. We're hoping that uh, different battery chemistries will come forward. Um, there is actually a company right in Cambridge, Massachusetts called Form Energy that's trying to produce a battery that works with iron through the process of rust and reversing that, that chemical reaction. And they they have uh, pretty much are going forward with developing a battery that will be safe. Um, in the news the other day, they talked about nuclear fusion. It was on 60 Minutes on Sunday night. So there'll, there'll be some technologies in the future, probably not in our lifetime, that will change the way we all live. And hopefully that they they're successful in in those technologies.
So Peter, the Peter, I know you said so in terms of originally it was like 200 watts, give or take in that range. And then they're up to.
They're still physically the same size.
Same size. Okay.
They are selling, Rich, they're they're, there are some on on the market that are five and 600 watt. But physically they're, they're bigger than my 400 watt panel.
Okay.
I have a question.
Is there anybody else?
Yeah, a question related. Yeah, hi. This goes maybe to Andy that um, when we're talking about the third party. Um, I know the one thing about, of course, if you have a roof and it should be a young roof that gets a system, but when you sign onto one of these deals with a third party, let's just say you don't live there that long, you sell your house. What's the complications that are just the most obvious to be aware of that? If, you know, you have a solar system, you just got installed with third party, two years down the line, you're selling your house, but you have a commitment for how many years? That's kind of an interesting conundrum.
It 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 is. Um, a couple of years ago, you might have seen on the news where the solar companies were putting liens on the houses uh, because of the long term lease and it was, it was stalling a lot of home sales. Um. It's kind of buyer beware, but also reading the fine print before you sign the bottom line to see exactly how the equipment would be transferred, how the arrangement, how the the sale of the electricity would be transferred to a subsequent owner. Um, and this is, this is where an attorney may be needed to come in. Um. And this, this is, this is one of the reasons why I'm not a big fan of these, these leases for, for all this fine print that's shoved down the, a perspective buyer's throat. And there, there's always this rush to get it done because they want to get you in, but realize, you know, they're not gonna be there for probably six to eight months. So that's, yeah, that's a problem. It's a problem. And you need to have, you need to have, you know, a sharp pencil when you, when you do this. Um, and I think I stated, you know, some of the costs, the the cost alone over the lease is well in its excess of the price of the equipment plus the installation. So that's obviously how they're making the money. But also you're paying taxes, the the property tax on too. Um, the the sale of the of that equipment to a subsequent owner. Um, I can, I can speak, there's an agent in Norfolk who I've, I've helped a couple of times. And it just made sense for them to break the, break the lease and have it pulled off the house. Um. And I mean, that that's the extreme, but it happens, it happens. And I. Yeah, it's, it's, it's almost a case by case basis, but at the same time. You gotta do your homework before you do this. And, you know, for, for some of the reasons, the financial reasons alone are enough incentive for me to, to basically say. If you don't have to lease it, don't lease it. So.
But if you buy a house, for example, someone has invested in it on their own, no third party. But now you've bought the house, it's 15 years down the line since the owner installed everything, the roof is getting older. When you do need to attend to your new roof on your new house.
Yep.
You're gonna have to tear it all up in a certain way. To make it work that you, you maybe want to rebuild everything, but it's not a simple roof job at that point.
It is not, it's no, it's not a simple roof job and I, I can, I can speak from experience. There's a, where my son's living, that the neighbor had a new roof put on. They've had solar on the house as well and the solar panels had to come off the, off the house. And they actually took the opportunity to sort of do some upgrades to the system when they put that in. And Peter can speak to some of the, some of the safety stuff that's gone on. They, they implemented like what's called a rapid shutdown device, which wasn't required at the time that system went on. But they, they did some upgrades to the system, which actually were a good idea. So, so yeah, so that's, that, that, there's, there's a benefit there. Plus you, you get to see if you. If, if you have degradation of the wiring and the insulation and as much as this, this, this wiring is, is very, very robust. Animals can chew on it and that's, that's, that's a downside for some of the, some of the ground mounted systems because they can climb up. But if it's properly shielded, it's not a problem. But even on the roof, you get a squirrel that jumps on the roof and they find a nice place to. To hide under the panels, you know, they're going to chew on it and that's. It's, I kind of viewed it as an opportunity to do, do an inspection. If you have to take it off and make sure everything is up to snuff. And it's not like you have a new system, but it's, it's definitely going to be a safety at that point.
Well, hopefully the future holds for the better of what, you know, homeowners have options and then. Obviously there'll be more people doing maintenance in the future if these systems become more prolific.
Yeah. I mean, there, there, there are companies that are out there that do maintenance and, you know, and I can be honest with you, they're not. They're not cheap by any means, because a lot of times they, they need to understand, you know, why the system isn't working. And sometimes it takes some time to figure that out and then actually doing the maintenance. There's half a dozen people I work with that have had systems put on their houses in the past three to five years. And these are all roof mounted systems and there's one woman that constantly she has, she has the app on her phone and she sees these micro inverters. And every day she gets an alarm saying one has failed and she's got like 60 panels on her roof. It's still covered under warranty, but again, you know, you've, you've got to shut the whole system down to do the repair. But again, she's, you know, it's, it's frustrating for her. It should have been pretty foolproof. I told her, I said, at some point you just might want to bite the bullet and just replace them with all updated inverters. Because what they're replacing it with is the, the, the old inverter, the existing inverter, which may or may not have a reliability issue. As I told her, it probably does have a reliability issue, but you know, I don't, I don't have all the details of why they failed. But, you know, it's, yeah, it's, yeah, it's, it's, it's an ever-changing. Ever-changing thing. I mean, it's, you, you've got to be, you've got to be on top of this stuff. And I know people have a lot of other things to worry about, but you know, it's something you gotta. Just sort of keep watching, I guess, is the best way of putting it.
Yeah. Admittedly, it's behind the times, but I, I bought a house that has two panels on the roof that were preheating my solar water when I first moved in. I even redid the roof since it. Was put there and I actually, they just moved the panels off the roof and up to them to redo the roof. So it was easy with only two big panels. But again, I know it's not the same as today's technology because all I'm doing is getting some preheated water out of it. But I have to admit, it was something of a benefit that has been easy to manage in my particular case. But I have to admit, with all these additional panels that are involved with the new systems, it could be quite a, quite an undertaking.
Yep.
It is done though, Joe. In town, we've already had a system that was removed to put a new roof in and they put the system right back on and it's still working.
Yeah, there'll probably be people specializing in doing this in the future.
And. The other thing about the batteries is they're also eligible for the 30% federal incentive. Tax credit. Ever Source runs a program where they can draw off your battery and they'll pay you for that. Maybe Andy has more information on that program.
Yeah, that's, that's called demand response.
Response.
Yeah, in, in, in Norfolk, the, the prisons are, are enrolled into that as well as the schools used to be enrolled in that where. What the utility says is, but we know we're going to have a, a problem with the supplying power. Can you, can you basically drop off the grid and turn your emergency generators on? And that's, that's, you know, what you, what, what you do is you throw the switch essentially take, you know, take the facility or the building off, offline. And you're running off the emergency generator. The. Demand response credits that I've seen that are provided to small homeowners and I have to believe they're probably talking 10 kilowatt systems or larger. Are, are about $1,200 per event. So if every single time they ask you to disconnect, I mean, they'll, they'll, they'll send you a check for $1,200. I know in the case of the prisons, when they would do that, they would send you a check for, it'd be. Five figures, sometimes six figures if it's extended for a 10 or 12 hour period. But realize you're also burning 100 gallons of, of diesel fuel. So there's obviously a cost offset that's there, but if it helps, if it helps the grid. And it helps the, the utilities, you know, this is something you want to try and help as much as you can. Doesn't necessarily, it doesn't necessarily seem to work. From the perspective of an environmental perspective, but in the case of battery storage for a homeowner, it sure does. It's a, it's a, it's a good thing. So again, if, if you can, if you, if you're enrolled in that program and you can get those credits. By all means, go for it.
Plus we can also use the battery to backfeed the power in the house and the power outage. Think we're all aware of that.
And Pete, Peter, I'm, I, I, I'm glad you brought up the issues of the different, the different technologies that are out there. I, I looked, I looked at just battery, a battery system for my house versus buying a, a propane fired generator. Backup generator or emergency generator for here and by the time you're done. It's almost kind of a wash. It might be a little more expensive with the batteries initially, but if you, if you, if you're enrolled in the demand response program. You have three or four of these events over a five year, six year period. It's, it's, it's almost a wash. So that's something to think about. And, you know, the, there's, there's less maintenance on batteries than there is on an emergency generator. Where the emergency generator has to run weekly just to make sure all this everything's functioning properly. So.
Good point.
Thank you, gentlemen. Is there anybody else out there who have a question or a comment for Peter or Andy?
Elaine, your, your mic's off, Elaine.
I'm glad you're running the meeting, Peter, because I'm having technical difficulties here tonight. I'm on my second laptop. But I'm, I'm wondering where are the, are the panels manufactured? Are they here in the United States somewhere?
There are some made in the United States, there's some made in Canada and a lot made in China. I have Canadian solar on my panels. I believe they have a manufacturing facility in the States. But they're based in Canada. From my research.
There was just some mention of them being produced, if. A lot of them being produced and using a lot of. Chemicals to produce them in addition to, I mean. Just throwing that out there for as good as they are for the environment and saving. Energy. What do we, how we kind of.
To make the panels, how much.
Yeah.
Damaging the environment.
Right. It's kind of the yin and the yang. I, I mean, I know, but just.
And I've seen some studies that say within two years. The amount of. Impact that you have on the environment from doing solar washes. The impact on the environment from creating the equipment. You follow me?
Yeah. Okay. I haven't, yeah, I haven't really seen any of that research. It was, it was a discussion I was having with someone.
Yeah.
I think a lot of that's being addressed this week at the World Economic Council, actually, Elaine. So you may see some reports coming out this week or some comments on it.
True.
Is there anybody else out there that has a question or comment for Peter? And since we have Andy here. They've been generous with their time tonight and it's been great information.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Rich, I don't see anybody on my end in the waiting room or anything like that. Do you happen to see anybody?
No, I don't.
You can't? Okay. All right.
Well, gentlemen, thank you very much for your time. It's a great conversation and good education for myself and hopefully a lot of other folks. Certainly the trend and again, thank you for your time and your input.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me, Tim and everybody. Courtney, Elaine, David, Josephine, Richard and Joe. Thank you.
Yeah, and thank you both.
Bye, guys.
See ya. Take care.
Always.
All right, well, that was a great. Education. So that'll be the future here and we'll see what it does to zoning and at least I have more education on it now, so that was time well spent. Uh, next on the agenda. Uh, we have minutes. We'll wait for the town plan updates, but we do have minutes. Joe, did you have a chance to review the minutes?
I did, yes.
Everybody else have an opportunity to review?
I reviewed. Looked good.
Okay. Can we have a motion to accept the minutes?
Is it okay that I make the motion even though I was not at the meeting? I apologize. I was laid down that week. So anyway, it's okay. So the date again, just remind me December.
It was December 21st?
December 21st.
Right, yes. Motion that we accept the minutes for December 20, we approve the minutes for December 21st, 2022.
I second them.
Okay.
You want me to do? Discussion, all those in favor? Roll call vote. Jim Martin, yes to accept.
Joe, yes to accept.
David Axberg, yes to accept.
Josephi Qodahi, yes to accept.
Chris Metcalf, yes to accept.
Courtney Sterling, yes to accept if you need me.
Thank you.
We always need you.
We always need you. All right. Next on the agenda. Town plan updates. Rich, if you have anything for us.
Sure, I'll. Few updates for the board. One of the, so we. In terms of the first, let me see where, how's these, these are all listed out. I'll go, I'll take them in order. Sorry about that. So housing choice. We did in terms submit an action plan to. MBTA housing choice, if you recall, just for a quick recap is. Whereby MBTA communities are required to have a high density multifamily residential zoning district. Within a half mile radius. Of commuter rail. Well, in our case it's commuter rail, but there are other public rapid transit. Locations. In our case, it's commuter rail. We, the town received the technical assistance grant. From Mass Housing Partnership to work with Horley and Witten on doing assessment. And determination of compliance and giving the, some options for the town to consider. Whether to move forward to make some changes. The changes would be relative to. The zoning bylaw in terms of allow multifamily by right. We don't actually allow that presently in town. As a, as a standalone principal use. Another, and then in terms of that high density that we talked about, it's, it's 15 units per acre. That part of the requirement is to have a, a capacity. Of 15 units per acre and for an area of in total of 50 acres. Which if we do the math, I think it's actually less than our required number. Let me see. Quick math here. Hold on a second. Should have done this before I came on, but. No, I'm sorry. Let me rephrase it. So it's 15, oh, let me restate it actually. So 15, 15 units per acre for 50 acres is what we're required to have. There is a. Formula within the guidelines, which looks at a community in terms of overall. Dwelling unit count and then you multiply it by a. Public transportation factor. If you take that number. It's below. Essentially 750, but for what they did, they ended up establishing a much higher floor. So in our sense, for our, our community, others. 750 is the bottom line number, even though technically the math works out lower. They made. Executive decision, if you will, in these guidelines that 750. Now that's a theoretical number. That's not an actual build out number because. The, in terms of any build out would have to be based on meeting, in our case, you know, Title V requirements and Board of Health regulations for. Septic system. And then there's components to that to deal with stormer as well in terms of pervious area. So an actual build out. Will, would be less than that, but that's something that we're going to be working on over the next month, all the way up into June. We'll be looking at the numbers, analysis and deciding. Whether, you know, whether it makes sense or not for the town to, to, to fully comply. With this stat, new statute, which our, our deadline is December 31st, 2024. What it's tied to is grants. That's the stick in the carrot. With the program. So we're starting to announce now in each. Each meeting going forward, I'll put a little bit update for the board as we're progressing along. It's primarily going to be run through the planning board, so you're welcome to listen in on those meetings, but. I can give you updates as we proceed going forward. Through the process of the next, say, six months.
Well, Rich, let me ask you a question. So in theory, if we adopted a bylaw. To qualify for the grant money, whatever that is. In essence, it couldn't be built anyway to that level. Because Title V and other issues.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
So is it still qualifying for the grant though?
What's that?
Would you still, would you still qualify for the grant? As you adopted the bylaw?
Yeah. So the way that this one works, the big grant program that we'd lose access to if we don't comply is Mass Works, which is the infrastructure money. So that's, that's kind of a bummer. But it's, it is a lot of smoke and mirrors, especially when you look at what's within a half mile of our commuter rail station, which is largely built out mostly at 15 units an acre. And they actually have the nerve to use Norfolk in their photos of the examples and trainings, which really kind of salts. Cause they don't let us count it because it's, it was 40B, but the reality is this one, this district is going to be hard to cite because most of it's already built out anyway. And then what you can build on, you can't build at this density largely because we don't have sewer. So it's smoke and mirrors, but it's deeply politically unpopular and it's going to be a horrible slog. So bless you, Rich. Bless the planning board. And bless you all.
So just by adopting a bylaw to comply with that. Wouldn't, wouldn't qualify you for the grant money that they're talking about because. In our situation, you could never achieve, you currently couldn't achieve.
Oh, no. All you have to do is adopt the bylaw. That's.
Yeah.
Okay, adopt the bylaw, okay.
Yeah, that's why it's smoke and mirrors. So as long as you adopt the bylaw, which they recognize is going to be horribly like unpopular. Because people will not grab onto the idea that this is actually unbuildable. But realistically, we would never, if we could put this down and we'd never get a build out of 750 units even over. You know, it would take 20 years and so, but this is what the state's doing.
Yeah.
It's gonna be fun. It's been fun. It's been a lot of fun.
Yeah, it's gonna be a lot of fun in quotes.
Yeah, yeah. Nobody, nobody's having fun. Everybody's mad.
So, and Rich, how much other grant money is hanging out there for this infrastructure then that's tied to that?
So Mass Works, so I know that the town rituals, we can speak to what the town's got Mass Works for so far besides the wastewater project. But like if the town wanted to do something about the sewer or lack thereof, that work would probably be funded through Mass Works. You want to do like a major culvert, that's going to be Mass Works. You want to do a dam project, that's probably going to be Mass Works. And so basically, Mass Works is a big and. Mass Works is, is the big one. There's a few smaller housing ones that if you don't love affordable housing, you're not going to feel the pain anyway. But it's, it's infrastructure. But Mass Works money is competitive. We've got a lot of infrastructure money right now because of the feds that they're still, you know, circling and cycling through. So that could be potentially bad. You know, that's hazard mitigation. It's infrastructure. It's stuff that ideally we would want to access at some point and that's why they tied it to it. So it's gonna be a phenomenal job for Rich. So it's, uh, gonna be a phenomenal job for Rich to do some sales on the idea of theoretical build outs, which people love. And reality, which is that the ground only holds so much poop. So, um, and so that's, that's where we are. It's kind of an interesting thing though, because it's like, it's like the program that you use to build a sewer system is the one that you lose access to if you don't comply. And so I see this as kind of like a nineties redux of when the state offered sewers and water pipes with no interest. And a lot of communities said, oh no, we don't want those because we'll get development. And so in this way, it's almost like even easier to refuse to develop. Uh, because then you're like barred from the program and it's unreasonable to expect, you know, a community, like look at what's going on with the Cape with searing. It's hard. It's expensive and you know, and so you want that Mass Works money, but at the same time, there's a lot of communities that don't want to grow it unless you're the Cape and you have the EPA breathing down on you, you don't really have a reason to do it differently. So it's kind of interesting. We'll see how it goes. I, I see like, I see the stick, um, carrot situation depending on the community being vastly different. It's one thing if you're a Lowell, it's another if you're a Weston. So we'll see. I, I kind of have my bets on which communities are going to do the, we're not doing it, but we'll see. Norfolk, we need to, so, um, Godspeed.
Thanks.
Okay. Rich, what else do you have for us?
In terms of the next item that I wanted to, so the master plan, uh, steering committee is, is getting support. There's been a flyer out there. We have had some residents that have put their name in the hat to volunteer. The planning board is going to meet and greet them on, uh, February 13th to talk about it and see who wants to ultimately join to be appointed. But so it'll be a steering committee, the planning board and then the planning board. So the, the one thing about the planning board, you're all residents, so you can participate. But you're not going to be asked to specifically sit on the master plan steering committee as a body, as a public body. In terms of who they're going to ask, it's the park and recreation commission, conservation commission, uh, the select board, but in your capacity as a zoning board, you won't necessarily have to sit on that steering committee, but you're certainly welcome to, uh, participate in your residence hat and take your knowledge when you're sitting there as a ZVA member as well, but you don't have to sit on that, uh, steering committee. So that there, the, the schedule is they'll interview the citizens, one per precinct. And then, uh, get the committee, uh, other members from conservation, park and rec, select board. And then have the first meeting in, uh, March of the mass, master plan steering committee.
So stay tuned. Responses from the public been, been good. Rich, have people come out and volunteered?
We have, uh, well, we, we have volunteers that come forward in multiple precincts, except two. Precinct two, we have zero people so far. So now don't ask me where precinct two is because I couldn't exactly tell you from a map, uh, or where you are, but if you look and, so if there's anybody out there from precinct two, welcome, please, uh, submit a email of interest.
When do you expect a, uh, public participation plan from MAPC?
Probably within the next month or so, if you would take. Yeah.
I know that I don't want to sit on a steering committee. I don't think I want to be interviewed. I don't think I want to be on a subcommittee, but I might go to one event.
Oh, definitely have, uh, yeah. No, no, absolutely.
I'm just like, I'm aware of the, of the levels of participation and commitment with one of these and I know, I, I know I'm on the low end, but I, I would do a survey and go to like one event. I would be a body in a chair for a workshop. It's depressing when you do a workshop and only 20 people show up. So I, I would go, I would go do that.
Glad to hear that. And the last thing that I have for you is, uh, we, we have talked about it in briefly before, but the, the thought process of, of putting together a special permit process for people to apply uh, through a special permit to modify setbacks, you know, side, front, rear yard setbacks. You know, it ha, it has come up in the past. Matter of fact, uh, more recently, a gentleman came in to, uh, my office and, you know, he's, he's moved in to town. He's probably been here maybe three or four years and, and, and similar to some of the other ones you've had before. You know, they want to, you know, they, they really love Norfolk. Um, you know, they, they purchased a home, which is you know, because our median home price is quite high in town. Um, but they want to invest in their, in their home and invest in Norfolk. And so we were talking about his, his particular situation and it's another one of the ones where the lot is, you know, below the minimum. Area requirement, but even, even so much as that, there are, uh, some of the setbacks. As you know, that you, you certainly struggled with this before as a body of not, you know, to meet in the, to meet in the the requirements to be their variance are much higher and they should be much higher. But at the same time, there's these situ, we've had them pop up. Matter of fact, um, one of the ones that you did grant previously a variance and special permit, they're looking to redesign their project. And they'll probably be coming back to the board. So, so what I, the, the summation is, I thought I'd start doing a little bit of work and throw some out there for you to, to noodle on for consideration. I'm not proposing that we, we tackle this in May, but it's something that we worked towards this year and see maybe it's something that may get, um, some more play for the fall. And as, after listening to Peter a little bit, we talked about the solar. You know, that's a little, just another little piece of this, just thinking about it, that would be nice to have that available. Because I think he was talking about, what is it? Maybe 15 feet, I think he was talking about. Um, you know, not a big amount. And I think his is, uh, his lot, if I recall correctly, it might be mistaken, but I think he's one of those corner lots that has a two front yard setbacks.
He is.
You know, so, um, again, it would, you know, it would help in that situation. You know, you've had issues with accessory structures that have come up. Um, I know I, we, I've, you know, met with folks who've had historic, so they bought historic homes that are much closer to the street and they, now you're including Davey, right? You know, so, um, you know, their options were, were limited. And so anyway, I think you, I probably don't have to sell you much. I'd probably just more or less will do the homework and put something together for consideration, um, to move forward.
This seems fairly straight. This one seems fairly straightforward to write, to write in a waiver provision and then a set of scenarios where we would consider it.
Yeah.
Uh, that's a couple, I can think of a couple of communities that have it. I can think of a couple where it gets abused. Um, because it's written pretty loose. Uh, you know, I always like it a little looser. So it can be a little, but, um, sometimes they tie it to the idea that you offset, you know, whatever you're encroaching on that you mitigate it. Usually it's like landscaping or something like that. Or sometimes you just leave it alone and just say in X, Y, Z circumstances and maybe with a catch all at the end of something that we didn't consider. But, you know, maybe restrict it just to like single family or, you know, the normal crap like that. But, uh, there's a couple flavors of it. But yeah, that flexibility, because man zoning, one size fits all, does not fit all. And so that would be great, especially that variance case we had with, uh, Betsy's property. That's silly silliness. And so, um, men lot size, I think will be harder to waive, um, just from a political standpoint. Um, not touching that, but touching setbacks is easier.
Yeah.
That's just my thought. Men lot size, you'll get some torch burners. Um, but I think, uh, with just setback waivers, I think that most people kind of get that, especially when they go to, you know, when they live on a corner lot like poor Dave and I.
Yeah. Yeah. And I'm, I'm now I'm just keeping a focus on setbacks, not lots.
Yeah. So I, that would be, I mean, I'm just like wave it all, but, uh, but yeah, I think that would be totally great. I'd be, I'd, I'd be happy to put eyes on that too.
Okay. Yeah, that would be awesome. Thank you. And then the other point that I would like to make consideration is, is have our, uh, special permits mirror the state statute. Uh, you know, we have the, the one year. And, you know, as you, one year is not a long period of time. And so, uh, we've had, you know, you recently had another one where it was an extension and I think that I'm not sure the rationale way back when, whatever that might've been. I mean, I'm sure they had good ideas why one year made sense, but, um, I think given people, you know, just to, to mirror the statute, to give them the three years is, makes a lot of sense to, uh, because we have right now within the zoning bylaw, we have the general provisions of, of special permits, which has one year, but yet the planning board in their special permit authority with the, uh, estate lots, they do two years, you know, so there's this little mishmash. So that would be the other one that I would, again, not looking to necessarily do that in the spring. So the spring, in terms of, I've talked about this before, would be the table allowable uses and, uh, sign by law for springtime, but you know, something that maybe give consideration to for this, the fall town meeting.
Yep. The fall typically the time for the zoning issues.
And that's, uh,
Is three is the right goal here or is it two years based on what the planning board is doing?
Well, the planning board, when they did two, that was in the old statute, then they increased it. I'm trying, I've no, I don't know. Trying to remember when they changed it. I mean, two would be better than one, but I might consider actually changing the planning board so it all mirrors the, the state statute. So it's not.
It'd be interesting what the planning board thinks about that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm gonna sell, I'm gonna sell them on, uh, mirror the state statute. We'll see how it goes, but.
And that's three years.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
It's common to miss one construction season. Usually if you've missed two construction seasons, the project isn't going to happen anyway. So two to three years is somewhat de minimis in practice, but in, in reality, it's just state statute. It just makes sense. But one year is too short because if you have any supply issues or any find, like it, it's just too short.
Like you said, the weather, if you miss the weather window.
Yeah.
Understood.
Okay. That's it for me for tonight.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Rich. Um, I think that's all we have on the agenda for this evening, unless anybody else has any comments, questions, or if there's anybody from the public who has a comment or a question.
I don't. See, so the only, the only true public on this list is Donna. The, I can see everybody else is a board member or a staff person or NCTV, it looks like.
She's enjoying the, uh, enjoying the event.
Yeah.
Anything happened with the fire station?
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
Anything happened with the fire station at the town meeting?
It, uh,
It went bad.
It passed overwhelmingly.
It did pass. Okay, good.
It did, yeah.
Good.
Very well attended.
Good. That was good.
Standing room only.
Yeah, I understand it was all estimated to be over 400 people there.
Wow. Wow. Very good.
Yeah.
Anyone want to?
There's nothing else on the agenda, so I'll accept a motion on the close, to close the meeting.
On the same ones, unless to add tonight, I'll just say, I'll make the motion that we close the meeting for Wednesday, January 18th at eight 28 PM.
I second that.
Is it a second? Roll call vote. Jim Martin, yes to close?
Joe Sebastian will close.
David Axberg, yes to close.
Chris Metcalf, yes to close.
Josephine Kordahy, yes to close.
Courtney.
Courtney Starling, yes to close. Have a good night, everyone.
Good night.
Everyone have a great night. Thank you for all your help. Have a good night.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you to the staff.
Bye bye.
Right, some of the links for the, the studio video that we did before the shutdown as well. There was another one at the municipal building and people can go back and look at those. But yeah, the, the key updates I think are going to be like